Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, October third, two thousand twenty-three, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. I, for the record, am Chair Vice Chairman Mo's Dunkle, presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, and Wayne Benner. Commissioners Ben McGrann and John Hastings are absent. We'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Are there any general announcements from the Commissioners or from city staff?
Mister Chairman, I first meant to introduce you all to Garrett Fitzgerald, who is our administrative support, and he will be here periodically. He's learning the ropes from Sarah, running the meetings and clerking, so she probably won't be here all the time, but we're happy to have him.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Sarah's not going anywhere, right?
I already asked that, and she says just vacation, and I said, you live in a vacation area. Why are you going anywhere?
And then, as we will have three Commissioners not here on the seventeenth, and I've reached out if anyone, and we don't have any applications. So I think we, and it's the candidate forum that night, I think we are going to cancel our next meeting, which is October seventeenth.
Very well. Okay, next item is approval of the meeting minutes from meeting September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting. Now entertain a motion.
Second.
Then moved and seconded.
For the record, who was the move?
Grant Simmons.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, motion passes and the many meeting minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is a continued discussion and direction on possible code changes to accessory dwellings. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Tweeten for an introduction, reintroduction to this agenda item. Amy?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yes, I think we are close and hoping that we are close enough to be able to schedule a hearing, knowing that its possible changes will continue to occur, but we've had a lot of discussions, so hoping we move this forward. I'm gonna go through the code. First slide I'm gonna show you is with all of the the changes, so there's gonna be highlights, strike throughs, just so you can see what all is being changed, then the slide after that will be clean, and that's the one I'll walk through. So again, we've talked about nine one five and nine one eight, which are accessory structures and accessory dwelling units. And then, along with that, would be changes to the residential codes that currently conflict with the changes. What we're trying to do is get all accessory dwelling units for detached structures in nine one five and nine one eight. So nine one five accessory, it's currently called accessory building regulations, and so throughout the code, we go back and forth between building, structure. So what we just, we just decided to go with the structure throughout. So the the highlight on this slide is all new text. Red is stricken, which you'll see where it says bait building, and that always is replaced with structure. And then, just to make it a little easier to read, again, this is a regulation for structures, including sheds, detached garages, carports, and accessory dwelling units. And then, A through G go through the beginning of the regulations for all accessory structures. So the first one is if it is attached to the principal structure, it follows the district requirements for the principal structure. So that's where you would go to either the RS or the RM districts. A detached accessory structure, including exterior stairways, may not be located closer than five feet to any interior lot line and not closer than five feet to the rear lot line. And then there's the allowance for the eve to encroach two feet further into that setback, but it cannot be closer than three feet from a rear or side property line. Just to clarify, accessory structures are included in the lot coverage of the underlying zoning district. That you can't put an accessory structure up before the principal structure. That detached accessory structures are only allowed in the rear yard of the principal structure. On a corner lot, the detached accessory structure shall be set back no less than five feet from the secondary street frontage wall of the that wording could probably be changed, but they're saying on the secondary street frontage, the accessory structure has to be five feet behind the wall of the principal structure. And an accessory structure with a street-facing vehicle entrance shall be placed no less than twenty-five feet from the street-facing property line. That's again for parking, not to block the sidewalk.
Amy, I have a question.
Yep.
Back to that slide, I think it's C. You've got coverage calculation of underlying zoning districts, so single family and multifamily, those are different lot coverage?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mister Chair. For E, what's the definition of rear yard? Is there a definitional setback to the principal structure that defines rear yard?
And the, let's see, I don't know if I included that picture in this. This isn't the good example, and I had that one. I had one illustrate, the rear yard is the yard behind the principal structure. So what I'll probably do is add a graphic, so that a house sits on a lot, anything behind the structure is the rear yard.
Got it.
The side is the side yard.
If not a corner lot.
Right. So it's that invisible line that lines up with the wall, rear wall of the principal structure behind that is the rear. And I have I'll, when we talk about corner lots, I'll demonstrate that a little bit with my very rudimentary. Any other questions on this?
Mister Chair. I do have one just question. When you're talking about like sheds, is that on a permanent foundation, or what happens if, say, for example, they have the company's rent sheds, you can bring one in, it's on skids. It's maybe not there or gets moved around. Is that still considered accessory?
It is. The challenge with those always are you don't, we don't require building permits for less than two hundred square feet. But a lot of times those structures tend to become permanent. So we do, even though we don't have a separate permit for them, they, we do require that those be set back the same as other accessory structures, and those would count towards lot coverage as well.
Okay. That came up last night.
Mister Chair. I have a question on item D, an accessory structure shall not be erected prior to the establishment or construction of the principal structure. There's, there has to be a reason behind that.
There, there is, and that's actually the current code, and it is, you know, people often want to build storage buildings. And then they say down the road, but we're gonna build a house eventually, and then it doesn't happen. So it's just to prevent people, you wouldn't think in this market, people would do that, but we do get calls of I just wanna build a garage now, but I wanna build a house down the road. They have to build that principal structure first.
Good point. Thank you.
Amy and B?
E.
Is there, and I remember we talked about this a little bit, but the eve being two feet closer to the property line, does that pose a snow shed issue into the neighbor's property or fence line or something like that?
We put it here because it's currently allowed for principal structures. So houses are allowed to be five feet from the lot line with a two-foot encroachment of the eve. So again, all the yellow is new text, some of it, yeah, all the yellow is new. And I've highlighted in red the addition, some additional language we came up with. When you're on a corner lot, you might have an existing non-conforming garage. And that's so what that reads, so again, it's saying you can change a use of a principal structure as long as it meets requirements of setback slot coverage. And then we have a provision for if there's a single-story accessory structure on a corner lot that is not able to meet the five-foot setback from the principal building wall along the secondary street, but is complying with all other setback requirements, it may be converted to another use if all five design criteria of section nine one eight B five are met. And I'll give you a little more detail on that one. So this is that provision, and my illustration here is, so if you look at one, two, three, Street B, the house is fronting Street B, it has a detached garage in its rear yard because the front of the house is Street B, so the rear yard is behind the house. And they have an existing detached garage in that rear yard, but it actually protrudes in front of the house on Street C, whereas the code requires if you were to build new, you would have excuse me, move that structure no less than five feet behind this plane. So it could not be more, it would, so here's here's the secondary street frontage wall, it would have to be set back no less than five feet from where did that most go? There we go, sorry. It would have to be back here somewhere. So what this provision allows, so that's one example here, and here's another example on another corner lot. This corner lot, the house fronts Street A. And again, it's technically, this detached garage is technically in its rear yard, but on the secondary street frontage, it's sitting in front of the house. So what that provision is, and again, this was something added, knowing that corner lots always seem to be at a disadvantage or a challenge, is that, say someone wanted to convert that garage to an ADU. We're saying you could do it, but you have to meet all five design criteria. So that's street fronting. They wanna take out the garage door, and they wanna put the main entry there, or they just wanna put windows there and turn that into a dwelling unit, as long as they met those five design criteria, which are the gable or hip roof, eaves of no less than one foot, front-facing windows, a covered pedestrian entrance, and siding of materials consistent with a principal residential structure such as all right. I think I, I think that word was supposed to be cladding of materials consistent with a principal residential structure, such as siding, bricks, stucco, or stone. And then that B is current language that talks about the second floor windows, and that, again, that's specific to accessory dwelling units. Second floor windows facing a budding lot shall utilize appropriate materials to maintain privacy of a budding properties if placed at the minimum setback, which is the five feet. So that is kind of our way of trying to work with corner lots, but that has not, that has not been discussed by the Commission, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Mister Chair. Oh, no, you go, you go first.
You're so nice.
Let her
politician.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amy, cuz that's, that was one of the issues that I was looking at with what we have, because both of these here would fit our scenario for the corner lot. Where you have an existing garage facing one street and the house the other street and not meeting the current back and forth that and I, since that time, I found two other ones in town that way.
And looking at areas, I found a few as well.
Mister. Yes. Yeah, thanks, Amy. When I read this this afternoon, I thought, how clever? Because, yeah, the corner lots are super disadvantaged, but this says, well, if you can fit them into residential character, and for lack of a better term, not make them look janky, great. So I wanna sort of, and I'm, I'm sort of sad that Ben's not here tonight, cuz I wanna channel my inner Ben a bit. Right? To say there, I I foresee, I will say personally, I am like, this is a really good threading of the needle here. On getting some stuff to enshrine the notion of like, hey, what what makes it look not like a utilitarian building, but an actual sort of residence. But it could be construed as heavy-handed to say, these are the things that the city has designed, decided equal Sandpoint residential character. So my rebuttal to that would be I think we can foot it back to the upcoming comp plan. When are we likely gonna review that in city council? When's that coming up?
City Council has a hearing on it tomorrow night.
Okay, great. How interesting. It'll be fascinating to me tomorrow night. And I think we can do that, and so I think it's the right thing. But I I foresee us having to buttress this a little bit relative to, hey, you're telling me what I have to do in my personal property in terms of eaves and contrasting trim and, you know.
I I will say that Commissioner McGrann did reach out to me because he couldn't be here, and wanted the Commission to know he was, I mean, not, he didn't talk specifically of these corner lots, but the language we came up with, either you're consistent with the principle or you follow the design. Either or, he was comfortable.
All right, good, great, yeah, cuz I was hoping.
Reason we put this, that you will follow these, is because you have a situation that we're not really encouraging. But if, if a one-car garage is turned into an ADU, and the front of it is facing the street, it almost looks like it's its own house. You know, it does fit into the residential character.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think a style guide to this stuff would be really helpful. Again, how do you do that without folks making it feel heavy-handed? I don't know, but I think, I think there's a path forward.
Well, and that, that is, Heather can talk about it some more, but is coming up with the pattern book and the recommendation that make it really easy to show people how to do the right thing. You know, I think at this point, this amount of requirement in code is probably what we could get.
Yeah.
And that just incentivized the rest of it.
Yeah, it's just, I don't want this to be perceived as, oh, wait, you're slapping a big HOA on Sandpoint. What are you, what's going on? Right? So that's sort of my own sensitivity to this, but I'm, this is a really clever way I handled this.
Mister Chair. I think the design features, and just to comment about what Grant said, I think the design features are not specific enough that there's that wiggle room for people, you know, it just says, you know, do this, but it doesn't have to be exactly like this. I think it's just an example or or a guidebook like the comp plan.
Yep. Yeah.
Right? Looking at you, Heather.
Yeah, go ahead, Heather.
Thank you all for your feedback, Commissioners, and the Commission and I, the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission, again, just really appreciate. May I share my screen? All of the consideration you have in terms of hearing what the community is saying when they say we need to protect our historic character, and I mean, you see them screaming that at us, right? And you see that in our Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Master Plan, and then you see it in the comp plan, and so the the beauty is, and and I believe you are gonna see that in the downtown waterfront design competition as well in terms of like our community has a desire and a want to preserve our history, but celebrate it in today's context as well. And and what you guys are saying is confirming that, and so I celebrate you all for appreciating that. And I'm really excited to share with you, the Commission just put together the final version of the bungalow pattern book, so immediately and I've already been sharing this with individuals where, when appropriate, we, we have a beautiful pattern book that the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission put together that that shares and celebrates the history of the style, and that that helps the community understand the why. We've created the foundation with these characteristics, and we're looking to to carry them forward, and I'd love to give this to Amy so she can share it all with you and in depth, but we talk about the history of the bungalow style from a national standpoint, and then how it relates to, from a local vein, and who would have been in there, and so it's just a wonderful journey explaining all of these things, and then you can see that six-pack there, which is now a five-pack suggested color palettes, and again, this is more of a resource. No one is telling anybody what to do. It's a gift that we're sharing with people. I think of people that want to celebrate the history of their home or or want a house that that works well with so many things, and you're you're saving them by, with resources like this that the Commission is looking forward to put forth, so they don't have to hire architects or designers or anything like that necessarily to to move forward. So know that those education resources are going to to be there from a historical standpoint, but anything that we can support in terms of design criteria with compatibility to the the historic character or just character in general, what defines what people feel like define Sandpoint, we're there to help. And it's, it's funny because I'm always just traveling around Sandpoint and stopping and taking pictures, and I, I just wanted to share this with you. This is a house on four twenty Michigan, and it has a refresh that's been done to it, and it's very welcoming, and it features all of the characteristics of a five-pack because it doesn't have contrasting trim. And I thought it was really interesting because if you, let's see if I can pull this up. If you go to on my Google Maps here, this is the before, right? And in very little like alteration that needed to be done, but it it changed it completely, and this is a very attractive, modern style. And so thank you, Commissioner Boyd, for pointing that out, because those characteristics are, they're a true foundation and a framework, and people can be expressive with all of that, and yet it still fits in with with the housing stock from the nineteen hundreds into what you're seeing in two thousand and twenty-three.
Was it a local designer on this?
I'm not sure that the roots behind it. I actually just discovered it yesterday, and I was like, I had to stop and pull over. Really well done, right? Yeah, and very welcoming, like you just wanna
Just open.
Right, and sit on that couch. And I thought it was a great example of of with just a little alteration, how how like comfortable and modern it can be, but it it truly references what, you know, we were doing in the nineteen hundreds as well. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'm gonna stop sharing.
Okay, so go back to this one. Okay, so these again are the changes to nine one five. And then moving into oh, they keep going. These let's see here. Okay, so this again is the markup. Yellow is new. This is where we've changed the height from the height being whatever is allowed in the district to no more than fifty percent taller than the height of the principal structure or twenty-six feet, whichever is less. And then the rest is pretty consistent with current language. Just a little cleanup on the recreational vehicle. And then just again, if you're doing an addition, you can on addition to a detached accessory structure that is non-conforming can be added on to as long as the additions are in compliance with nine one five B and nine one five L. This is just that illustration, and again, just the rear yard is the opposite of the, so the front yard on this house is from the front wall forward. Same with this one, that's the front yard. The side yard is on the side of the structure, and then the rear yard is behind. So we may do some kind of an illustration, just so people understand when we're saying, because a lot of times in the code, it either says rear yard or rear yard setback, and those are very different things. We're just saying placement on the lot is behind the principal structure when we say the rear yard. So then, getting on to the accessory dwelling regulations specific, A and B are all current language. Or one and two, four, again, changing the maximum size to seven hundred square feet gross area, including habitable and non-habitable space, and a second-story ADU shall not exceed seventy-five percent of the principal structure gross area or seven hundred square feet excluding stairways, whichever is less. And then this is the new design compatibility, so we didn't either or here. ADU shall be designed consistent with the principal structure, roof pitch, exterior cladding, and windows, or shall incorporate the following five design features to ensure compatibility with Sandpoint's residential character. Gable or hip roof, eaves of no less than one foot, front-facing windows, a covered pedestrian entrance such as porch, portico, or trellis, and siding of materials consistent with a and that will be cladding, I'm gonna change that to cladding, of materials consistent with a principal residential structure such as siding, bricks, stucco, or stone.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Amelia, was this the language that you thought needed to be more descriptive? When we were talking about going back a few slides ago?
No, I think what I, what we were talking about a few slides ago was not about the the five-pack.
Okay. What do you ask? I just wanted to be clear. Yeah, yeah. This is Mister Chair. Yeah, I think this is where we might get some pushback, and we gotta be willing and ready to sort of defend, right? Meaning, how come you don't prescribe this stuff on primary structures? Like, why are you why are you laying it on the ADU level? You know what I mean? And so I think, again, we can foot it back to the comp plan and the greater sort of vision. But I think that's where we we're gonna have to maybe give this one some thought. Again, I'm on board, but I I foresee a, I see, for folks who are interested, I could see a little bit of pushback here.
Yeah, I I agree, and I do believe this is trying to do that balance of the many goals of the comprehensive plan. And again, I I'd sent the, so it's not that there's nowhere in the code we get this detail. There's many Um, and again, I, I'd sent the, so it's not that there's nowhere in the code, we get this detail. There's many parts of the code we get way more. Or original lots of record, we have much more specific requirements than this. And I think this gives enough flexibility, but it also is um, giving clear direction.
And I'll, I'll say for the record, I love where we landed with the setbacks relative to square footage and height. I'd say no notes on that. I, I really like sort of how we chatted through it and figured it out.
Um, I have a question about B, second floor windows. So I've seen um, some ADUs where you have the higher windows. So nobody can stand and look into the um, yard next door. So is that steer, uh, you know, I see the glass block or opaque glass. But what if it's a window that's, you know, seven feet up?
Sarah and I have experienced this term.
Clear story, clear story? Heather?
Yeah, it is a clear story. I have a picture right here.
What, what's the word?
A clear story and it came into the seventies. Yeah. And so it's almost like you see a lot of it where the roof, the gable.
Oh, it slopes down from the window.
You have like the three vertical windows.
Or sometimes there's a horizontal strip of windows. That's not, you know, they're not this way. So you're not looking out the window. It's just providing a light.
So is there a provision in there about that or?
We could add something. I mean, that again, it, it is meeting the intent of the code, which is not having you looking down in the neighbor's backyard, um, but is providing light to that upper story. Um.
Because that's a, a personal preference, right? Some people don't want to look like, look through a murky glass. Some people want to actually see the trees, the stars, you know, the sky. Um, so if those windows are out of line of sight of somebody unless they're eight feet tall, um, I think it would behoove us to include, I don't know what the height, you know, what, what would be a good height set limit. Um, but I think it's something that we need to re.
The technical language around that is a little tricky, but I, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Of course, Mister Chair. I mean, that could go both ways. You may not want the neighbors to look in on you either. If you've got a neighbor with a two-story house.
That's true.
Fair, but I mean, do you write it in such that when viewing from the interior, the window, lower edge of a clear window can't be uh, you know, five and a half feet. I don't know what that, do you see what I mean? Meaning such that you would have to look up and over it. But you're allowed to have clear glass. I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Mister Chair. I think that normally those windows are more for um, decoration or accent and not for, you know, like natural viewing behind them or on the interior of the house.
Yeah, it enables light to come in, you know, natural light. So that was a sustainable concept in the seventies. And the movement of trying to use lesser electricity, you saw a lot of, of those kind of peek-a-boo windows in certain places.
What was that term again? Clear story?
Mister Chair.
There's probably an explanation behind the definition right there.
We used to call those solar windows.
Yeah.
To get the light in.
Absolutely. That's like early.
Sounds like a vestige of the seventies for sure.
Mister Chair. If, Amy, if you don't mind going back a couple of slides, I just have a question on the RV sites. No, on H right there. No house trailer recreational vehicle shall be used for human habitation on any property in any zone unless cited within an approved facility for recreational vehicles. Trailer park?
Right, RV park.
RV park.
So currently it ends at zone period, but we actually have an RV park in town. In fact, we have two, but they are cited on properties that are allowed for or historically occurred for. So this is just saying, if you're in a approved RV park, you can use it to live, well, short-term. But, so I just wanted to add that clarification.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, that's just the.
Is that, is that in the right spot? Because would it not, it's not really an accessory dwelling if it's an RV park.
It, it's under accessory structures instead of accessory dwellings, I think. Let me double check. Um, yeah, it's under nine, one, five accessory structure regulations versus accessory dwelling unit, dwelling. So it's true, if you're in a, yeah, I don't, it's a good question.
A new zone?
I mean, this is where it is. But it isn't actually accessory to anything.
Yeah, especially if it's a park with, that's all that there is there.
Right.
So is that, would this almost open the door for there to be recreational, approved recreational areas on like single-family lots? Like could a single family?
The code changed it and it wouldn't. Except in the R one in conjunction with. Uh, but you make a good point that.
The placement.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's saying you can't use as an accessory structure.
Yeah, no, you're right. I guess it's reinforcing, well, it's, it's stating that where you can't have an, uh, an RV.
Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my, because it doesn't really fall under accessory to begin with. It's not. There, there's no principle that it's attached to.
It's not a stationary structure. If it's an RV.
Right, it is actually not a structure. Well, it could be, but.
Where's Fonda when you need her?
We need legal help.
I'm so sorry about that.
Vehicles.
Yeah, it's a vehicle. So it's not real property.
Yeah.
My thought is that it um, it's a little bit confusing. Uh, and from a legal perspective, that's what you try to avoid. Um, and so kind of the, the taste and all that, that's all up to you guys, but the I definitely see where Amy's coming from, trying to, to plug this in here to say, look, there, there are the other. I, I mean, maybe we just um, one option would be to define structure. Another option would be to choose a different word. Um, but I think that the body of the um, proposed changes makes sense. So it just, it's just a matter of finding the right word.
Yeah, yeah, some tweaking. Yep, definition.
Maybe we get rid of unless cited within an approved facility for recreational vehicles and move it to accessory dwelling units.
Well.
I don't know. I'll think about that some more.
Well, Mister Chair.
The, okay.
Sorry about that.
I was just gonna say the, the temporary barns or whatever the storage units, that would fit here. And, and so why wouldn't, and, and RV, I mean, especially if it was plopped on the, on the yard, you know, it was in the street. So um, I just think getting a thesaurus out and coming up with a word other than structure would probably clean it up a lot.
Well, the difference would be that one is like a titled vehicle. And, and a barn is, you know, not a separate, you know, licensed, you know, movable. It's movable, I guess, temporary.
I mean, to some extent you can't avoid these. Like what's the difference between parking and camping? Um, when you're in a lot of these van cars and stuff. Uh, so to some extent, this is just, this ambiguity is just unavoidable. Um.
Alright, but somewhere we do have language that says you can't pull an RV onto your yard and just stay there.
This is where it is.
This is it. Alright.
Other than the yellow part.
Um. Yeah, I suggest we might want to take a little deeper stab at this then. What do we think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the language is, is very descriptive. I mean, it says no house trailer or RV shall be used for human habitation on any property in any zone. So to your point, Mister Chair, um, you know, if it's any house anywhere, it's a no-go.
A week, a month, ninety days?
There is a building code, um, if it is less than, I can't remember, it's a hundred and twenty days. A temporary structure more than a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty days becomes a permanent structure. If it is not moved for the building code. Or there's something.
Whether it has wheels or not?
But there is something about, um, if, so for example, if a someone wants to use a pod.
Yeah.
Permanently instead of building a garage, that then becomes a s- uh, structure.
Oh.
Where, because they're meant to be moved around, but it, we've, we've had this question of I just, I don't want to build a garage. I just want to put a pod in my backyard, then it needs to meet the accessory.
But that doesn't apply to vehicles. Meaning if I park a boat for a hundred eighty days, it doesn't suddenly become a building.
That's not a structure. That's still a boat on a trailer.
So an RV theoretically, sort of the same thing.
You're right, it is.
Right?
I mean, I think that it catches the definitions right there, though, that it's uh, used for human habitation.
Right.
And so it's right there in the body of the language. The more I read it, the less confused I am.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
No, I agree with that.
So Mister Chair, will that keep those off the street then? Because how many times have we seen those RVs on the street with little power cord from the house?
While you're running and.
That's a different, that's a different zone or a different topic.
Yeah, fair.
That's an enforcement issue.
Well, while we're on that subject, what is the enforcement on that? Is it thirty days or the, is it a week, forty-eight hours? Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I can, I can look it up, Amy. I'll find it.
Sorry, I digressed.
It's fine. I, I've questioned that a lot this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of it.
Yeah. I'm actually doing it.
Off the record.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, Amy, could you go to the, the next slide where we talked about the style design? Yeah, keep going. Relative to building an ADU, this is where we sort of left off. My only call out would be on five A. Whatever cladding la- language we pick up earlier, we pick it up here. That'd be my only note.
It's the same here.
Yeah, but I think it's that resident structure such as siding brick stucco. I think that there was a little bit of cleanup to that sentence relative to the earlier.
I think I just referenced that, um.
Okay.
Yeah, it's down here.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah, so I guess that would be the, yeah, okay, got it. Nevermind.
This should be the same.
Seems to be.
It is. I misread it. Thank you.
The only thing with the ADUs is it's one, it's and, or it's one or the other.
And I think that's a nice, yeah, I think it's a nice um, sort of concession to the extent that there will be any pushback on this. Um, I think, think it puts well to stuff we've done. And so I really like how you handled it.
So when we get pushed back on the seven hundred square feet, we can also point out that we've taken away the bedroom, the one bedroom.
Yep.
Right, we don't regulate number of bedrooms.
Yeah, so they can have nine bedrooms.
Yep.
Or.
Good idea.
Or no, or no bedroom.
Uh, and then uh, attached dwelling units. Um, this is all existing language. And then detached, a detached ADU shall, because currently it says a detached ADU shall be site-built only. So we wanted to allow for flexibility to, for modular or prefabricated dwelling if they are constructed in a HUD-approved facility within the past twelve months so that people aren't bringing in old ancient trailers that they're then turning into ADUs. And then E is.
So the, sorry, Mister Chair.
Yeah.
So the way I read that, to be or, or be a modular prefabricated dwelling because again, going back to the five and it's got to match. So if you're, if we're suggesting that there's an add-on being done to a manufactured home, it has to be of a manufactured scope, right?
No, we're saying you could bring in a prefabricated ADU detached. It would still need to meet those design criteria, but it doesn't have to be built on-site.
Okay.
Like a tiny home.
Yeah, so prefab tiny home type?
Yeah.
Is that, okay, got it.
As long as it has foundation, it's not.
Right.
Yeah, right.
And it matches.
Correct, or meets the five.
The five, yeah, okay.
Because it could, Mister Chair, sorry. Because it could meet the five design criteria and not match the principal house.
Correct.
So we could still have that contrast.
Yeah.
But it just won't be as stark, i- is the goal. So it's not so.
Um, I think the, the goal was if you're not going to be matching the principal
Structure.
Structure, that you should be trying to honor the traditional or the character, we're saying, of residential structures in Sandpoint.
Yeah.
So on that.
I get it, I get it. But I'm just saying, I mean, you could, you could have two distinct, different structures still within the ADU, still within the guidelines of the five pack. Um, but look completely different.
That's pretty flexible.
Yeah, I, that almost sounds like, you know, a physical inspection and approval. Like you'd have to, somebody from the city would have to approve this to be put on a foundation.
Right, they have to submit plans.
Yeah, there would be anyway.
With their building permit.
So if it, I guess if it's.
Truly out of character.
Yeah, then you would, I'm gonna guess the city would say, that's no. If it's truly out of character, out of character, no contrast, but meets the five that you could say, no.
I would argue as long as we get the comp plan sort of footed, then it gives us enough of a backstop to, to defend that, I would argue.
But it's so subjective, right?
Yeah.
It's really subjective. So who has that authority? It, it falls within the criteria.
Yeah.
It's, you know, and I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm being devil's advocate. So you've got a cute little cottage home.
Yeah.
Built in the nineteen twenty. You want to build an ADU. You follow the five criteria, but it's, you know, bright purple with pink trim.
We don't regulate that.
I, I, exactly. So
So.
I'm just saying it could be, you know.
I think it's when you say you want to build an ADU, I'm under the impression that you've bought an ADU. You've moved in an ADU.
Ri- right, but you're not going to be able to cite it on a foundation without a building permit. So you're gonna get your building permit. You're gonna show us the plans. Or you're gonna give us, you're gonna say either this is um, consistent with a principal structure, you're gonna show. consistent with a principal structure, you're gonna show us how, or you're gonna show that it meets the five su- or, yeah, five criteria.
There's a lot of steps there.
Yeah.
So, they also have.
The building process.
Right.
Yeah, and.
It's got that.
That's nothing new, and if somebody has an ugly house, they can build a nice ADU still, so.
They could both be pink.
Yeah, they could both be, but they'll have.
Purple.
The shape of them will be.
Right, it won't be two stories taller than the principal structure.
Yeah.
We've accomplished that.
No, I think it's.
But city has last say on it anyway.
Yeah, again, we're trying to, we're trying to give parameters without telling people how.
Yeah.
We're letting them have some creativity and flexibility.
Mr. Chair, and I think that was what, what your question to me was that I had gotten confused about, and yes, I, I think that was the area, but just not so much detail, because that's where it does get restrictive, but I think it's a proper guideline.
And what we removed was a contrasting trim, that was the six-pack. And there was, wasn't great support for that, so we just removed that, because currently mono monochromatic seems to be popular.
Until it isn't.
Change in two years from now.
Yeah, I went home with that idea for contrasting trim and I was shut down pretty quick. Because I have everything but that.
Um, so the, the modular prefabricated dwelling, that's, that's a big deal.
Sorry?
That's a big deal. As far as, cause I know on the market, there is a lot of prefab, small, uh, I don't even wanna call them tiny houses, there's, they're, they're like, storage units that look like houses that are small. Really small, you can just buy them and they deliver them in sixty days. So currently, we don't have a, an option for people to do that, do we?
Still have a building code.
So it could one of, currently could one of those fit into the code?
Currently, they have to be site-built.
Okay, so, hmm, this could make.
Big change.
Yeah, that's.
I, I like that.
That's trying to get at affordability.
Yeah.
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 Now, that's, and speed.
Right.
Because, uh, an ADU could take as long as a full-size house.
If it's a big ADU, yes.
Well, I mean, it still has all the same connections to be made and, and all the process is the same. So a prefab could be a lot faster and cheaper, I guess.
And a lot more custom in probably the next five to ten years, right? I mean, you probably have a better sense than I do.
But just remember, the caveat here is that it has to be constructed in a HUD-approved facility.
Yeah, but there's a lot of that available now, and, and modular houses are on the comeback too, which for about ten years, they haven't even been on the market at all, so that's a big deal with affordability may potentially. Now, it's like small lots.
I like it.
Really small lots, like two thousand square foot lots.
E- easy there.
There is some, there is one off of Maine, I think there's a lot that's really, really small.
Really?
Yeah.
That has an existing house?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you have something, Heather, are you holding?
Um, yeah, commissioners, I think that a great way to think about the new compatibility and the way that Amy came up with this is, uh, we're just dipping our toes in it, right? You know, and, and we're still giving them so much flexibility to, to express in a way that works with their house, so, so it is still, if someone has a full metal structure with a shed roof, they could complement their primary with doing the same in the ADU, so it's not super restrictive and we're not completely eliminating that, um, trend. But it is, it's going to be interesting to see the reaction and to see like what, which direction people celebrate us, they think essentially with this, and I think being able to, um, incorporate this, um, i- it's a brilliant test, you know, run with the, the ADUs as we're considering, you know, further, um, residential options, so. But I, this seems very, very flexible.
Uh, and this is just going through the sections that, as I said, there's many place in both the RS and RM that garages come up, and they always talk about attached and detached. So we're just getting rid of in garage, in the garage section, and if you ever look at this part of the code, you, if you think what we're talking about is detailed, you have to have certain percent of windows, it has to be set back. You can have a, you know, there's a lot of detail, but I think the whole point of the code and, and um, getting rid of the detached structure is what they're trying to prevent are what are called snout houses, so the garage is a prominent feature sitting in front of the house. So that's what all of these sections are trying to do. Um, we just need to make sure that when you're doing a detached structure or garage, that you re- you revert back to nine-one-five and nine-one-eight. So that's what all these changes are. Uh, and then new and clarified definitions. Again, principal structure is a structure which the principal use of the lot is located. Principal use is the main use to which the premises is devoted and the predominant purpose for which the premises is permitted as distinguished from an accessory use. Structurally attached, because we get a lot of people like, well, I'm just connecting it with, uh, trellis.
Hmm.
Um, structurally attached means any building or structure that is structurally a part of or that has a common wall and or continuous roof with a main building or structure. That is when you would apply this, the attached um, ADU provisions, or any structure being attached to a principal structure has to follow different requirements than the ones we've been talking about in terms of setbacks. A carport is a structure which is open to the weather on at least two sides intended for the use of sheltering vehicles from the weather. And then we've amended the definition for private garage just to be an accessory building for the storage of motor vehicles and other personal objects. There must be a reason why it was so very specific about commercial vehicles of not more than two tons, but um, that just seems very, very specific, so we just broadened it a little bit. So that is the changes to the ADU, uh, and accessory structure requirements. So based on that, um, the commission would need to hold a hearing before making a recommendation. Does actually fall, actually the accessory structure provisions fall in general provisions, which as we'll talk about, ju- those don't have to have a, a hearing by the commission, but because we're also making amendments to all these other RS, RM, um, and because you've made, we've had more changes than what council originally asked for. Um, I would recommend that the commission hold a hearing. So, if you're ready, we can if you wanna give us direction, we can try to schedule a meeting for the, I think the first meeting in November would be the earliest we could hold it.
Uh, do any commissioners have any thoughts or comments on scheduling a meeting?
Mr. Chair, I think we should go ahead and schedule a meeting and, and, or a hearing, I guess.
I concur with that.
Right.
Mr. Chair, um, yeah, I think probably in the next time that we actually hold the hearing, we can go through. We've got a little bit of language cleanup, right? Maybe a little bit of additional stuff that you might wanna think through, but relative to the window on the second story.
Right.
So.
I, yeah, we'll come up with some wording to kind of broaden that.
Yep, and then, um, suggest that this comes after whenever the comp plan gets ratified, because a lot of this is gonna have to flip back to that version of the comp plan, you know what I mean?
Well, that can happen tomorrow.
We'll see. Yeah, we'll see.
There's a, there's a chance.
Let's see. Yep.
One in a million. Okay, so I would suggest we schedule that hearing for our next, uh, normal meeting, which would be the first meeting of November.
Yeah.
So if that's all of that, we could move on to.
Alright, this one is a little straight, more straightforward, um, and, but again, this does tie into the fact that we are updating comp plan. Following the comp plan, we start updating codes. Um, so we don't currently, currently the site plan review for administrative approvals has no expiration. So what we're proposing is, um, for these types of reviews to have a one-year um, ex- a one-year approval with the ability to ask for an extension, um, if if done before the expiration of the site plan, um, and then otherwise it will expire, and because we keep running in situations where people like, oh, I had that approved, and you know, there we don't currently have an expiration on it, so a building permit will expire, but, um, if someone doesn't apply for their building permit right away, we wanna make sure that that, that site plan approval is just not hanging out there in definitely, um.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
What, do we have, do you have a sense like the median time between approval and groundbreak in the last two years? Like, is that?
If there's a wa- depends what kind of project you're asking.
Yeah, okay, fair.
If it's a single-family home, if it's a multiple, I mean, a lot, the bigger projects, like the conditional use permits that come before the.
What about some of the bigger, the bigger multifamily?
That's easily from the time they get approved to real groundbreaking is often two years.
Okay.
And they have a two-year on those.
This is purpose, you actually have a year, but, um, if they're making progress on it, like they're doing clearing or they're doing foundations, but it especially a lot of those projects, if they're looking for.
Yeah.
Grant funding.
Based on macro conditions, they might string that thing out.
Right.
To the last day if possible, got it.
So, you know, I mean, we, we, when we present to council on the development tracker and we say, you know, it goes through planning and zoning, we have this, last year we had a big lot of all these approvals.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think any of them are breaking ground yet.
Oh, interesting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, most of the building is stuff from two or three years ago.
Yeah.
Really?
Like the stuff on Cedar Street that's just getting done.
But, yeah, I mean, it's subdivision or conditional use, but now if you're asking about a single-family home.
Yeah, yeah, that stuff, well, the financing is usually.
Yeah, if they submit their permit and it's, you know, I mean, we have a pretty robust review system, so it just, it, I don't have a good answer for you about, it depends on the project.
Okay.
So, to be clear, this just for site plan approval, have to have an expiration. Now, if they let it go over a year and they come back in like eighteen months after approval and it's been, you know, expired, how big of a deal is that gonna be for the city to go through it again?
Well, it's, it's, again, it's an administrative reviews, they just have to resubmit or renew their permit.
So.
Application.
If they have a site pr- plan approval, and then they get a, let's say they can get an, another year, is there an option for them to get another year on top of the one year?
Um, yeah, where did we, um.
Extension.
Their extension of up to a year.
Yeah, so during that time, would have, something changes like what we're doing right now with an ADU.
Well, as long as, you know, so they asked for an extension, we granted an extension, they can still in that extension period build what was originally approved, even if, say, the code changed. But if they let their approval lapse, the code changes, they resubmit, they're gonna have to meet the current code.
Got you.
And currently, they can have a ten-year-old site plan review or a site plan approval, and they, for like really old code, maybe, potentially.
Potentially, i- it has happened lately. We try to tie it closely to the building permit, so you apply for a building permit, that starts our, our site plan review. Um, but just to be sure that someone doesn't just apply for site plan review and then never moves forward, and then they say they sell the property, the next person buys it thinking, oh, well, this was approved, I can still move forward. Um, it's just, again, your conditional use permits have expirations, your plats have ex- expirations. It's just good practice to not let something be approved in, definitely.
Yeah. So will any of the existing approvals, will they lapse within, in a year from this point forward? Because.
Until, uh, once this code is amended. So if the commission recommends to council that this change be made, once the code is changed, then site plan reviews will be good for one year with possibility for one year renewal.
On the existing approvals.
No, if someone has an existing approval.
They're good forever, maybe.
I'd have to think about that.
This is happening.
Would they be grandfathered?
I've seen, I've seen property for sale specifically at the airport that claimed that it had site plan approval for a certain structure.
Mm-hmm.
And it's fairly old approval. So I'm just wondering, is there an idea of like how many of these are out there that people will be hanging on to? And if we, we're kind of stuck with that because we probably can't change it now, and then have those expire?
I think it's probably dependent on, you know, when someone says they have a site plan approval, what that actually means. Did they get a site plan approval? Did they get a permit that, a building permit that doesn't exist anymore, because building permits will expire without any activity, so it somewhat depends, but if a site plan, a current site plan until this cha- change is made, probably is still that one.
Well, I think it's a good idea that we put a limit on it.
Yeah, could we, actually, could, Amy, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to do a little research around that relative to applications that have approved site plans? How many are hanging out there, and what's sort of the average date? You know what I mean?
We could look, I, usually we don't find out about them till someone walks in the door and says, I have this site.
Oh, really? Oh, my.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's sort of unknowable.
Um, there are surprises that come up, right?
So it's, it's knowable over the extent of all time. You'll eventually discover all of them.
But.
But there's no way to know them now.
They would need to read current building code, and so, you know, we do have some safeguards in place. I don't know that there's a lot of them out there.
Okay, I don't, yeah, uh, Ms. Chair, I don't know what's reasonable, but, yeah, we might wanna think about some.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Amy, how long does it take generally for a site plan renewal?
A site plan renewal or review?
I'm sorry, review. How long does that take? Is that weeks or?
Again, it depends on the project, if it's a, um, single commercial structure, or if it's a hanger in the industrial district, it generally goes more quickly. If it's a site plan review for a cottage development, it can take many months. Uh, so it really just depends.
Yeah.
Like Mill Yard, the Mill Yard that we approved, or Mill, Mill Town.
Mill Town, that was a conditional use permit.
Oh, that's right.
And they would have, if just, if they hadn't done anything, I think they would have already expired. But then they did all of their environmental, so I, I think their CUP want, but that was a building permit, they got to do that, so that could be coming up on an expiration. Want, but that was a building permit, they got to do that, so that could be coming up on an expiration.
Hmm.
But we hear it's moving forward, it's been a little while, but. I believe that one will move forward.
That's been, it's been a while in the making.
Yeah, I think it was at the commission last, uh, spring of twenty-two.
Yeah.
But then it was probably. I think they started doing all that grading work.
All of twenty-two.
Yeah. It was late fall.
It was late fall, it was snowing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So I, it sounds like we should move forward with this.
Yeah, I like this.
Yeah, and then that, the only other thing that I also, um, related to this would be. A definition for adjoining, because when we do, um, the code talks about when you do a site plan review, you. You don't, when we do public hearings, we notify within three hundred feet. When you do site plan reviews, the code requires that you notify adjoining property owners, but it does not define what adjoining means. So that is the purpose of this definition, um. Which is showing that an adjoining property physically touches. Um, or is across an alley from the subject parcel. It's not across the street.
Mm-hmm.
It is adjoining.
Makes sense.
So. Yep, if those, um. Again, because those both fall into general provisions of the code, the commission doesn't have to hold a hearing on that. You're welcome to hold a hearing if you want, or you could, um. Board it to city council for their consideration.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The. The ones that are kitty corner, lower left, lower right. Adjoining, I could see some.
Touch the corner.
No, I get it, yeah, 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 um. Yeah, okay, fair.
Or if that alley weren't there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's where it said that, um.
That's what I was thinking, if the alley wasn't there, could you consider them adjoining, meaning that they would have an intersecting fence?
Correct.
And so are they truly adjoining? I don't know. I get it.
They're physically touched at the corner.
Does that define adjoining? I guess I gotta look the word up.
I, I mean, from a, so you wouldn't look the word up.
Yeah.
Standpoint, you'd use that definition right there, but from a practical standpoint, these notice provisions.
Yeah.
They're, they're important, don't get me wrong, but actual notice is really kind of what matters, so.
Okay, fair.
If law, if a lawsuit ever transpired from this.
Hey, look.
I'll be about. Actual notice, um, and those landowner, I mean.
Yeah.
The the broader you do it, the better, and so.
Yeah, fair.
Do we have a motion to? To recommend the proposed amendments to city council?
I'll make a motion.
He would move.
To city council, move.
Move.
Thank you.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Dunkle.
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Um, so this is the time during our meeting where we have an opening for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Anyone on Zoom? Or in the room?
We do not have any attendees via Zoom tonight.
Oh, I'm missing out.
Oh. Anyone in the room like to make a public comment during this time?
No campaigning, no campaigning.
We can fill a comment card out after.
Hi, I'm Neil, Justice and I'm the chairman of the. Arts, Culture and Historical Preservation Commission, and I would just like to say thank you to everyone. For your serious consideration of all of these very deep subjects. And we appreciate the chance to, uh, collaborate with you, uh, presenting the. Uh, bungalow pattern book and, uh, the five-pack concept. And I just appreciate the time that you guys spend considering these, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, uh. Willing to comment, uh, we'll now close the meeting, well, adjourn the meeting, sorry, at, um. Six forty-four PM?
Thank you, Mo.